I call this meeting of the Cedar Woolley City Council to order. Thank you all for coming. Please rise before and join me with the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, and justice for all.
Item C, roll call, Cheryl.
Counting member Dunleavy.
Here.
Counting member Carnegie.
Here.
Counting member Brenda Kinser.
Here.
Counting member Julia Johnson.
Here.
Counting member Chuck Owen.
Yeah.
Counting member Rick Lemley.
Present.
And counting member Brett Saylorstra.
Present.
Okay, and I also am here, thanks to Joanne for putting these nice little speak into microphone reminders, and I would also remind you that it really makes it a lot easier for the people in the audience if you move up close and speak into it. So, next up is approval of the agenda. I have two items I would like to add to the agenda tonight. First is a consent item, item number five. You have a new copy with an amended amount on it in front of you. And we have the lease for the museum that we've talked about for months and months, and I would like to put that under unfinished business. Hopefully, we can get that settled tonight. So, that said, do I have a move to approve the agenda as stated?
So moved.
Where's the format?
One to five?
No. This is just the agenda. Yeah, right, not the consent.
You need it listed, don't you? Why not?
It will replace item five. It's changing the amount, unless you want to pull it off, which is also acceptable.
No.
No.
So, I have a motion to approve the agenda as stated. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion was made by councilmember Dunleavy, seconded by councilmember Lemley to approve the agenda as stated. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Moves us on to consent agenda, item E. We have items one through five, noting that item five was substituted for the new MOU with the amended amount.
I think no idea. That's what I was looking. What was the amount before?
This is an increase, up an additional 8,400.
The original amount was 5,000, that's in the packet, and the updated amount's $8,400.
I had no problem with that.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, items one through five?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items, number one through five. Beckett?
Motion was made by councilmember Carnegie, seconded by councilmember Johnson to approve consent agenda items one through five. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And a motion carries. Thank you. No special guests tonight, not that you aren't all special to us, but... So, we'll start with staff reports. Chief?
Just a couple of things. Got a couple of people that are going to be heading down to the police academy to do first-line supervisor certification training. My sergeants were supposed to get their first-line supervisor certification through the state, and they have to take a first-line supervisor course down there. It's a pretty decent course. Went through it when I was a sergeant, so I'll be losing them to the academy for about a week. And then went to a very nice awards assembly, award ceremony for the Mount Vernon and Burlington officer that were involved in Mick McClory's shooting in last December. Very well attended and very well done, Mount Vernon, pretty class act. A lot of teary eyes in there, and Mick McClory's going to be retiring soon after this. They kept him on the rolls as long as they could to get him through the first part of his convalescence, so very well done about Mount Vernon's part, and I was very impressed. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Chief Klinger?
We've got one of our part-timers and volunteers back. She was back in Boston going through their, what they call their paramedic boot camp training, and she's taken all of her tests, she passed, and now she's just on the clinicals, so we're excited to have her back and excited for her to continue on.
John?
Well, the planning commission just finished up in time for to clear out of the way tonight for the city council meeting. Had a planning commission meeting at 5:00 o'clock tonight. One of the items that the council was interested in, and give you a quick update, was the review of the zoning down at the former Cedar Woolley mill site. The planning commission reviewed the Phase 1 environmental site assessment that was performed. The city received a grant to perform a grant, to perform a study on that property. Mal Foster Longy did the study, which was a review of available documents. There wasn't any site work done. And this wasn't the first Phase 1 ESA done on the property, so there weren't really any surprises, nor were there any big items that were found down as far as recognized environmental contamination. So, not a lot to report there, which is a good thing. So, that was the planning commission meeting tonight. Other things going on with the planning and building department, the, I've been in contact with the owner of the Video West building that burnt down back in the spring. Doesn't look like they're planning on doing any development on that property anytime soon, so we're going to be requiring them to fill in the hole and prep and grade the surface there and plant some grass and maintain it. So, that's going to take a little time for them to do that, and in the meantime, they'll be putting it up for sale. Apologize for the fence issue. I've been calling the property owner a couple of times a day, some today, a couple of times to ask him to put the fence. That has been blown down. I appreciate everybody in the community letting us know when it blows down, because it's important for us to get that site secured. There's some feedback from somebody's foot. So, I've instructed him to make sure that, I've instructed him to make sure that the fence doesn't fall down anymore, so we're working on getting to figure out a way to keep that fence from keep blowing over. Because city crews, it's not the city crews' job to... That was intentional. He was trying to cause trouble down there. So, I think that's all I have to report. Thanks.
Thank you, John. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I have the pleasure of announcing the TIB results that came in last Friday. The city applied for three projects. The arterial project program on Fruitdale, to rebuild that and build a new entrance to Northern State, was awarded 1.784 million towards that $2.5 million project. The TIB sidewalk project on SR 20 from Township to Fruitdale on the north side was awarded 240,000 towards that $704,000 project. And finally, the arterial preservation program, State Street project, which has three stretches between Highway 20 and Fourth Street, was awarded 358,000 towards a $399,000 project. That was the three applications we submitted, and we actually were awarded all three of our asks this year. I should mention that Burlington and Anacortes also had nice projects funded, as well as Mount Vernon. So, our region did very well, and Cedar Woolley in particular this year, so we can be very grateful that the state thought we had some good projects. Has a total of 2.382 million for Cedar Woolley in grants towards 3.6 million in projects, and we hope to build them all this summer. So, we have a little bit of work to do to get that in place. Fruitdale is fully designed. We have a couple of right-of-way things to clear up, but we should be able to go to add in late January, early February, build that this summer. We have to design the State Street project and the sidewalk project. We're talking internally about whether we're going to do that in-house or put at least one of those out for bid. We'll have that decided by tomorrow, and we'll get busy on those. Of course, we already have on our plate, design for our sidewalk and ADA ramp project, which is about a $350,000 project also, and David's putting the finishing touches on the manhole ceiling project, which is up to 100,000. So, we really got quite a slate of things to do in 2018, and we feel like we're up to the task, and I'm sure we'll be talking to you more about those as they develop. I wanted to also report that we have advertised for consultants for the Jones-John Liner Trail Road corridor scoping study. That was 100,000 that council authorized from TBD funds, Transportation Benefit District funds, to do the preliminary studies for that particular project. And the reason we're doing that this far in advance is just for the same reason we were funded on these TIB projects. We're getting ahead of the curve. We'll get those various eight projects that make up that corridor study moved to their next level, to where they'll be ready to go to full design. We'll determine the right-of-way needs, and for those segments that are new, like the segment of trail north of Cook Road up to Jones, work on whatever alternatives for the alignment that we want to consider in there. So, all the rest of it's basically on existing right-of-ways, so that part's relatively simple. I wanted to report also that I had a very good meeting with Burlington Northern Santa Fei Railroad that was facilitated by Ross Widener, our longtime environmental consultant. Ross is also the consultant who does this region for BNSF. We actually had their district roadmaster for track and road maintenance here, Dan McDonald. He's quite high up in the BNSF hierarchy, and as well as the local roadmaster Carl J. and a couple of others. So, they're taking that project seriously now, and I'll be bringing back to you, hopefully within the next month or so, a proposed agreement with BNSF to start the process of them looking at what it would take to build that under crossing. Our scheme at this point is to have BNSF build that crossing themselves. That will probably save at least a million dollars on the crossing, maybe more. We had budgeted to do that. Overall, project's been carried along since we first applied for funds for that some years ago at about 7.8 million dollars, and a good chunk of that was for the crossing. Burlington thinks they can do it. The figure is shifting up on us as we discuss it, but around 2.5 million is what they're talking about right now for that part of it, which we'll have to figure out how we can fund. But we'll get it in position for the next rounds of TIB and federal funds as they come up, and hopefully, we'll have some kind of inside track at legislature for some things there, too, so that we will look forward to as another possible funding source for that. And I shouldn't forget that in keeping with what we've been doing and plan to continue doing on the arterial streets and the local access streets, Nathan's got quite an aggressive overlay and crack seal project plan for this next year as well, well over $200,000 in projects there, similar lengths to what we did this past year. And that's making a real difference in town, as you've been commenting on, and so we're going to continue that program. And again, TBD has been key in a lot of that. I know there's a move, an initiative that's being bandied about to look at rolling back the TBD. I just want to express how important that is to us for what we're doing. The match funds for State Street and also for the sidewalk project, both have major components from the transportation benefit district, and I honestly don't know how we would do those without that at this point, so just as, wanted to encourage you to continue to support that as you have all along. Final couple of things to just report on. Jones Road, we have been getting ongoing complaints from the folks out there, and it has been bad. It's a private contractor working for a developer to extend the sewer line in the middle of Jones Road. He's doing it to city specs. It's a very deep sewer, started out at 16 feet. They encountered groundwater at about 12, and they've had all kinds of problems, including last Friday, a very serious accident that badly injured one of their crew members. Nonetheless, they're responsible for finishing that job up. Now, they have finished the installation of the deep sewer. They have reached the end of that. I think it's about 900 feet altogether. They knew they needed to drop back and complete the services. They put the taps in on the main and got them up to a shallower level, so that's a much easier job, but there's about a dozen services for them to extend yet, so I expect another couple of weeks for them to do that, and then they'll build the road back behind there. Originally, they were approved to just replace the half-road that they thought they could build the sewer in, but they've pretty much toasted the entire road, so we're anticipating almost the entire road surface will be replaced. Just today, at David's, David Lee's assistance, they had a crew out there that spent the whole day getting the road regraded and gravelled. So, it should be passable through the weekend, and next week, they've committed to us to have the proper equipment down to do the ongoing maintenance as they finish up their work. So, we're keeping a close eye on that. We apologize that we were not able to control them better, but honestly, it was a tiger by the tail to get that sewer in. It's been a very difficult project, but it is on the road to being complete. And finally, we've had also complaints regarding the crossings associated on Cook Road with Bob Ruby's 28-unit development there. We have put him on notice that that needs to be paved. We had told him by this week, and they didn't meet that deadline, but they're also on notice that that needs to be done. Our backup on both of those projects is if they fail to perform in a timely manner, we will do that. In the case of Jones Road, we have a performance bond that we can bill against. At this point, we don't anticipate having to do that, but that particular tool is in place should we need that. With Mr. Ruby, we don't have a bond on that. There were not major civil improvements associated with the projects that would have required at most of the developments on-site, but we have a pretty good hammer against them , too, on when we give them certificate of occupancy. So, we're working closely on both of those. We do anticipate that they will get both of those paved before the end of the year. We had hoped it would be sooner, but as you've seen, the weather has turned decidedly negative in that regard. That's all I had to report, Mayor.
Mark, with our new friend in the railway, is there any, is it too soon to maybe present the idea of the trestle sign? I mean, is it the right person to communicate with that?
Well, Aaron's working on that separately, and I think he's had some good conversations. He can report on that.
We don't have any updates on that. Most recent contact was actually from the mayor with the BNSF spokesperson, and, you know, they've been very positive, but the action...
But nothing's really happened.
Yeah, hasn't happened, so...
Julia, did you have a question?
I do. I just want to extend from the council our thanks for all the hard work that your staff in-house here and your crew out on the street, they work hard, they do, Mark, and so do you, and we greatly appreciate that. The monies that we receive, that is fantastic. Thank you very much.
Well, yeah, thank you. Fantastic. Did you have anything else, Mark?
Nope.
Anything else from council? Aaron?
A couple of items. One, our Lush Schwab is in the process of transferring ownership and will require some adjustments to an agreement that we had from when the roundabout was built. Just wanted to give you a heads-up, anticipating you'll see that on the 13th. I don't want to hold up their transaction, but the, kind of the summary issue is that the rumors who owned the front piece as well as the back piece agreed to build Patrick Road from the roundabout to Jones Road. They built a piece of it as part of the Schwab project. The rest of it doesn't have to be built until the binding site plan is improved, but a portion of that is currently on the tire center property, and our agreement encumbers the tire center property. So, the goal is to probably do a boundary line adjustment and take the unbuilt portion of Patrick right-of-way, attach it to the property in the back, and do a release agreement to take that requirement off of the tire centerpiece and have it all attached to the back property. So, the road still gets built, but it gets built when the binding site plan's approved and doesn't encumber or jeopardize that transaction's, you know, timely completeness. Second request that I think will probably come to you on the 13th, and unless you've got some other guidance for me, is Terry Gifford reached out to the city with a joint request from her and the museum for a tea and tour project. The concept next year is to bring bicyclists to her farm just east of Cedar Woolley. They'd ride their bikes on the trail into the city, go to the museum, and from there, they would begin an historical tour that's either a combination of walking in town or biking in more distant locations. And the request is to place some sort of hand-built, they're basically just mailboxes that the tour members could operate with a key and pull out an informational pamphlet about particular historical locations in the city. So, it involves the city because some of these locations where the boxes would be would be on city property. She'd like to put one at the cemetery, at Riverfront Park, at various pieces of equipment that are around the city, and Hammer Square, just to name a few locations. So, we don't really have a straight-up, you know, here's a permit to do that process. I told her I'd bring it to the council and get your guidance. She's happy to come on the 13th and kind of give you the full presentation. My thought is it would be nice to approve this request for the museum and for her project for next year, see how it goes, reevaluate if there are any issues, but certainly bringing folks to town for that purpose with the tie-in seems all very positive. So, I don't know if you've got any guidance, so would you like this year on the 13th, or are you comfortable approving that, or what would you like to do?
Aaron, isn't it not similar to like the, they think the Jehovah's Witnesses, they have their little informational stand there, and they sit in front of the market, or, I mean, couldn't they do it by the same...
Different, except it's, so what they do is exercise their First Amendment protected speech on the public walks by being there to hand out information. These would be not-staffed stations.
Oh, so that's the difference?
They want to have this box attached to a post or whatever it is as part of their tour guide route. So, it's more like, you know, if you're walking through a national park and you get the guided tour and you walk to position 28 and hit the button, and you listen to what happened, and, you know, that particular cell block at Alcatraz or whatever.
Okay. For my own preference, I think giving it a test period of a year is good, but I think we would also like to have her here. I don't think it's an either-or, just to explain it to us.
Yeah, all right. Well, I'll invite her to come.
Does that sound reasonable, counsel?
That'd be great.
I'll invite her to come to the 13th. I know she's happy to come talk to the council. And then the last item I've got tonight is just a quick update on the library process. You approved in the consent agenda the MOU that expands the pre-designed funding scope, and what we're looking for in particular there was a little bit more money for the architects as we, we've taken, the pre-designed committee's taken two sites to a more advanced level to really try to understand the implications of the sites, and we're continuing to study the old feed barn location, and we require some special testing to kind of fully understand that site. So, we're anticipating spending several thousand dollars, three, four thousand dollars to get, in addition to the Phase 1 work we did, to get the asbestos and lead testing done so we can accurately price demolition on that site. So, got some good estimates, but we're working through that. Process-wise, of course, we've got the public open house next week, a week from tonight. That will be preceded by a joint staff meeting and the strategy group meeting. So, the architects will be providing their report, listening to any additional input that they have, and then the city council receives the recommendation of the committee on your December 6th meeting for your formal first reading, and on December 13th, depending on what you choose to do, it may be on your agenda for possible action. So, we're kind of wrapping up to the end of the process, and just want to keep you posted on that. Otherwise, there's just lots of things going on in the county right now. It's been the 20, what year is it, 2017? Started out with a bang, and we're racing to the finish line. Oh, you need a microphone, don't you?
Any questions for Aaron? Moving on. Patsy, welcome back.
Thank you. I do realize that this time of year was not the most opportune time for a finance director to take two weeks vacation, and I am extremely grateful for the opportunity to cruise through the Panama Canal. If any of you do have an opportunity to ever go, please do. It greatly exceeded my expectations. It was a great time. And I did come back with a little bug, so I'm not supposed to breathe into the microphone here. We're entering a busier-than-usual time of year for the finance department as we're working on, you know, property taxes, budgeting for both next year and this year, you know, do we need any more amendments, as well as payroll and all sorts of things going on. So, we're busy, but we're keeping our heads above water.
Okay, thank you. Judith?
Well, I had a very welcome phone call this past week about finally that crosswalk being put in at Trail Road across Cook with the flashing yellow sign. It will be much appreciated.
Actually, just tonight, saw Hannah Walt at the, we're out grocery shopping for Thanksgiving and with his family, and he couldn't stop talking about how much he appreciated his new job in the department. He loves it. I just wanted to mention that.
Good job.
Mm-hmm. And happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thanks, Jermaine. Brenda?
Nothing tonight.
Julia?
Well, Aaron touched on it. I was just going to announce that we have the new library open house. It is coming up next Wednesday, the 29th, and it's from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. right here in the chamber of council, so I hope to see you all there. And then I do, I don't know who this question goes to, but I do have a question regarding the, right there at Floyd's, the West State highway line, the barrier that we've talked about putting in. Is there an update on that, or is there anything new going on there? And the reason I ask is because I saw a vehicle almost rear-ended there again. That's the second time.
Well, since we just talked about this today, I know that there is.
Yeah.
Well, we had a conference call with their attorney, and just today, the city presented them with three different options, allowing them to keep their current driveway, but we'd put in the C-curbing, move the driveway east a little bit, but restrict it for ride-in, ride-out access, or move it as far east as would be, you know, to match the property lines and have unrestricted access, and they're not really excited about any of those options. Of course, we entered into an MOU with them earlier this year to allow them to move the driveway east and not have the C-curbing. So, you know, that has complicated our ability to just go in and install C-curbing, so we're continuing to work through options with them. We were, I think we creatively thought of a fourth option today, which would be to go with the full access point as far east as would be allowed, and then keep their existing driveway for a ride-in, ride-out only with a physical barrier. That might meet their needs better. You know, they're, of course, concerned about access to the business.
Sure.
The property owner... The property owner revealed today, and I don't know if it was an accurate estimate, but that they're working something like 500 vehicle trips a day into that shop. And of course, the prior use was a physical therapist, which, you know, I'm not sure what the trip generating manual would show, but I would guess about a tenth of that would be a pretty busy, you know, a pretty busy day for a small physical therapy office. So significant shift in traffic, but we're continuing to work with them on getting something done there that works for everybody. And I think we were very clear with them about the safety concerns and are interested in getting that done soon.
Okay, thank you. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Maybe we should put a toll there.
Chuck? Yeah, I just want to thank Rick and his staff for hosting the Memorial Day service, and they've done an excellent job. And we, and myself as a veteran, really appreciated it, and I'm sure the rest did. And also, the little memorial that he dedicated outside, it's really nice, and I would invite every one of you to go by and take a look at it. So again, Rick, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You want that dollar an hour later? Rick, I had a conversation with one of my constituents the other day, AKA my mother-in-law, grateful that Bennett Street had been redone, but was asking if they might come and sweep it. The gravel is still pretty prevalent in and around there, and throwing a lot of rocks and cars coming by and throwing rocks and things. So if they have an opportunity at some point to sweep it again, thank you.
Brett?
Just to echo what Julia was speaking to earlier, I've spoken to, I guess, several residents on, is it, what is that road there?
West State?
No, across the street from the marijuana, Marquand Tower there.
Was that Wes Nelson or?
Curtis.
Curtis Street. And, yeah, they just have a difficult try, trying to maneuver anywhere in and out of that intersection, and they're not happy, so.
Yeah. Okay, well, I'm going to repeat some things that have already been said, but I want to start with the TIB results, and I think, Mark, you used a great word, grateful, since it is the season for that. But I'm grateful for you guys, it doesn't happen by accident, so you guys having those projects in line and ready to go and having a record that's viable is the reason we got that. I mean, it's very rare to get all three projects like that, and it's going to be a load off of my mind so I can quit having no answer for the, when's Fruit Dale going to be fixed and when's State Street going to be repaired, because now we know. So thank you for that. I would echo Chuck's comments. Thanks to the Lemley Chapel, I got to be there to help dedicate the monument. If you get a chance, go read the words on it, they're very poignant, and it was a great ceremony. I saw Chuck, I saw Jermaine, and maybe some others were here. Jermaine mentioned Detective Hannah Walt, so here's a good news story, if you haven't seen it already. Detective Hannah Walt, because he's intuitive and quick-thinking and also a dogged detective, saved a family about $70,000. They were defrauded through a scam online, and he figured it out in his mind quickly on his way over. There was a go-between in Cedar Woolley, who was paid a couple hundred bucks to transfer a whole lot of money to Mexico. I think the total was in the $90,000, but they got about $70,000 or $75,000 back, and I mean, you can imagine that in your life. So good on Hannah Walt, what a great day. Talk about the Jones Road, thanks for the quick action on that. I mean, it was terrible. I went out there today and it did need to, they needed relief. And then, happy Thanksgiving to you all. And we will move along now to public comments. So anybody who wants to speak at the podium on an item that is not a first read and is not a public hearing, because you'll get a chance to speak on those items in the agenda, but anything else is open and you get three minutes, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Mary Anderson, and I have lived at 928 Beachley Road for half of my lifetime. I found it disturbing to read in the newspaper that Cedar Woolley will be charging its citizens utility fees comparable to those of Greater Seattle. I wonder how many of us regular citizens could afford to live in Greater Seattle on the Skagit County wages we receive? With 50% or more of the students in our in-city schools on free or reduced lunches, how do you expect those families to manage? And based on the recent Central Skagit Library Board meeting last week, I'm reminded of an old ad for perfume when I was a child. Promise her anything, but give her Arpegg. We were promised a bigger and better library, but apparently it will only be 10,000 square feet, essentially is what the libraries have now, and we all know we're bursting at the seams. We were promised that no books would be discarded except through normal culling, but this small size ensures we will be forced to throw out books because there won't be enough room. We were promised that there would be no new taxes associated with this new library, but guess what? Even Central Skagit District taxpayers will see a 1% increase allowed by law because they can't manage their library on what they get now. Imagine what our taxes will be when you've started this new library and then you run out of money. We've been told during the transportation upgrade that as many as 4,500 people will be moving into Cedar Woolley city limits within the next 20 years. How will a library that can't meet its current patrons' needs accommodate nearly 5,000 more people? That's 30,000 people to be served with a 10,000-square-foot building. Frankly, I didn't really want to come here tonight. I do have company at home and pizza dough rising, and I know you're all tired of hearing from me, but I wanted it on the record that the destruction of your 100-plus-year-old library and its treasured books is a crime against your citizens. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mary. Next up.
Helge Anderson, 928 Beachley Road, Cedar Woolley. And I know you guys do love to hear from me. I want to congratulate you all for the new dream team, actually, the Wagner for the new dream team. I'm not too sure that the residents will have the same dream team, but time will tell. And I want to congratulate our newly-elected official for being here also for the first Also, what I wanted to say was, actually, who was it? Yeah, as much as I've been a friend of this city council now for two years, I'm looking forward to be an even closer friend in years to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Helge. Anyone else for the public comment period? Ed, come on up.
My name's Ed Kubel. I'm from 501 Fidago Street. I just said, would like to say that I hope you'll keep an open mind on the library. It's not a done deal yet. I think that we might be better off having two libraries in the city rather than having one. Central Skagit is committed to building a 10,000-foot library in our community, whether we help or not. We could have 17, we could have two libraries, two branches in our community, and we already have sharing, so it's, it would be like our library, just like they can use ours. So I think you ought to consider that when you consider whether we should continue with this project. And also, I think that the competition might actually be good, having two libraries competing against each other. Capitalism is better than communism because we have more choices. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Next up.
Well, my name's Dennis O'Neill, and I reside at 109 Telcott Street. And I also like to talk about the library very briefly. It sounds to me like the money's not going to be there to put up what we were sort of promised by going with a new library and having one instead of two. I was talking to Aaron about it on the email and asking why we have to be downtown, and I guess it's to bring business into the downtown area, but I wonder what that's going to look like in the future as the town grows. We've got a library smack dab in the middle of the business center, and we don't have any parking for it, because the parking's going to disappear hopefully as the city grows. At where they're at right now, you've got a little park over there, Phil brought it up here a couple weeks ago. You know, that's a cute little park, and it's absolutely not used at all. It's close to the library, there's parking, there's accessibility, and it's closer to schools for school kids. Downtown is not a good place to have a library, even though you might pull in business. It doesn't work, it won't work in the future, and it'll be one of those things everybody's going to look at and wonder why it was put there. And I'm including the old feed store building, which is probably about the same shape as the grocery store building, which everybody knew to be probably not worth the cost of trying to renovate. The last thing I'd like to talk about is an article in the paper on October 25th that Solly and Sallad and Harold and Wendy and myself, I'm sort of used to the mayor, we go back and forth and sort of tease each other a little bit, but I thought it was pretty bad when, you know, the mayor's running, we're trying to get appointed to the state legislature, and he compared, he compared himself and the progress his city council's done, and I think it is progress, a lot of it, but I wanted to make a comparison here. I've just taken the information in the paper. The mayor has five terms with city council, and that works out to 108 hours a year. And Harold spent 20 years in the police department. He spent 37, 37 years in the fire department and was a state fire department person. But what I'm saying is, how do you, how can you insult somebody like that and act like he's not progressive and, he's what you're building on. Those people and their efforts from the past, and I don't think that's appropriate. I don't care so much about myself, but I didn't think it was appropriate in good taste or statesmanship. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Anybody else for the public comment period? Okay. Moving on to item K. This is the second reading of the 2018 budget ordinance. It's pages 32 to 41 in your packet. And Patsy, or Aaron?
Well, there are no changes from the budget ordinance that was presented last time. I just would want to note one item, which is between last meeting and this meeting, Councilman Owen invited me to the senior center, a place he has invited me more than once. This time, we toured the kitchen, and in particular, we looked at the flooring. Knowing where we were in the budget process, it seemed difficult to me to imagine more dollars there, but I called Skagit County and asked if they'd be willing to reduce our 2018 senior services cost by $10,000 to fund the flooring project, and they agreed. In fact, in your consent calendar, you approved that contract. So we would anticipate at some point in 2018 amending the budget to address that, and we will be adding that project in 2018. So good work on that. In addition to the skylight leak issues, we've got some work in the restroom still to complete, get the kitchen flooring redone, hopefully get it repainted while all the equipment's out, and just get that area tuned up and looking sharp. So Patsy's, of course, here for questions, as am I, but there are no changes. Budget is, after a public hearing, the budget ordinance would be ripe for possible action tonight.
Is that 1890? Yeah, okay.
Any questions before we open it to a public hearing?
Oh, that's right.
Okay, at 7:44, I open the public hearing on the topic of the 2018 budget ordinance. And same rules apply at the podium, if anybody would care to comment.
Reference to the budget, I see where the administrators, the top people in our city government are getting a real good raise this go-around. But I fail to see where our working people were listed in the increases in pay. I'm curious how, how you figure the percentage for the administration? And I assume that it was, that the workers themselves, like our police officers, the people on the streets, this sort of thing, have also got to get a little raise. I'd be like to know what, how that creates that percentage rise with what the administration got.
Do you have anything else to say, Harold? You still have some time.
I'm waiting for an answer.
It's not a question-and-answer period, as I have explained many times.
Well, okay. If that's the situation, it's a, it's a real difficulty come to a meeting and try to find any information when you can't get an answer to a next question for you. I think it's something that maybe the council, you're the people that run this outfit, not the administration, but the council. It's not fair for somebody to come up here and ask a question and say, we can't answer because it's not a question-and-answer situation. With that in mind, why, why have an open meeting? Now, take a look in here. 11,400 people is our population, my understanding. This building should be jammed right now. People are interested in their government. They're not here. Why? Because they can't find anything. I mean, I, I hate to be argumentative with you, but you people need to wake up. What happens? They go up to you here and hand you something, and they want you to vote for it? A good example, that brush cutter that you guys put in here about a month ago, so, what is it, $158,000, something like that? How many of you people actually know what you bought?
He's got about 30 seconds.
How good is it? What company did it last? What, what was the competition? My, my understanding, when you buy a thing that's that much money, it goes up to a bid. I never heard about a bid. All I heard was, we've got to have an answer tonight, and if we get an answer tonight, we do it, we save $5,000. That's all I heard. I'm starting to shake my head. What in the heck's going on? In 10 minutes, you people voted just a bid of $185,000, if I remember correctly, and not even know what you're buying.
Your time is up, Harold. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anybody else for the, Dennis?
I'm Dennis O'Neill, I reside at 109 Telcott. And I'd sort of like to follow up with Harold's comments. I don't think anybody even knows the manufacturer on that. Maybe you do, one or two of you, but I'll bet most of you don't. And I understand that, you know, you went with a bid from another entity and sort of tagged along with that. I think that's sort of a stretch of the rules when somebody says that the city policy says that you're supposed to get your own bid. And you know, $5,000 and $185,000, about 2%. We're going into the winter time. Nobody's going to be out there bidding on this equipment. I don't know if it's 2018, it doesn't really matter with farm equipment or something like a grass mower, but you know, there's no demand out there going into winter normally. People are looking at trying to get their budgets through and everything, and the master focus, and then after the first year, I think they get fired up and try to do something. I'm not saying it's a bad time, I think it's probably a good time to do something, but, you know, it's, it's like a 3.5% discount on a 180-some-thousand-dollar piece of equipment. And boy, if that makes sense to anybody up there, I think you should go out and buy cars. Find out, you can get more on a car, and there's more, you know, supply and demand. It just doesn't make sense that you're not actually sticking to a budget and finding out like what would Kubota do, and what would John Deere do, and what would the rest of them do? And that's never come up with you guys. You always sort of take, you don't get inquisitive at all. You just sort of yes and no, and don't take questions from the audience and do your own thing. You know, I think I came out pretty good in that election. I was quite impressed. I, and I know that from the people that called me and talked about it, they listen to this. It's right up there, folks, your camera. And they hear it, and they watch you, and it paid off for me because I get up here and ask questions, and I, I got questions. Why aren't you guys talking to anybody? Now, I know Rick and Brett there are, don't plan to run again, but the rest of you are, you're all going to run for office again. And if you don't think those people are paying attention, you're wrong. And if you don't think those people are paying attention, you're wrong. It's not a joke. And that's what I like about the recording, you can get copies of this and, and listen to the whole thing, including my voice right now, it's going to be on that written copy. And that's one of the things that, my next article, if I can get one in the paper, will ask people to say, "Go and ask for a records release on that. See what's been discussed, and ask them yourself why they aren't getting their own bids. And how come they didn't get more information before they just approved it?" You know, that's what the term, I'm sorry, but it doesn't apply really, but the rubber stamping term comes from. You don't get enough information to make decisions. I was impressed by my turnout. I didn't get a chance to go out and walk, I was sick for a month. I was in the hospital for a couple of days. I wasn't out in the street, and I still got 98 votes, it's more than I ever thought I'd get. And I was very impressed by it, and I thanked a lot of people about that. But it, it just, you're forgetting that, you know, it doesn't, isn't just a newspaper anymore. You've got people, I mean, it's amazing how many people call me about what's going on, and they get my, my phone number out of the pa, out of the book, you know? So I appreciate that, and I think it's going to come back to bite a few of you. You can't act like, you know.
30 seconds, Dennis.
You just can't keep doing things without asking questions. You're not much good to anybody. Heck, we don't, honestly, you know, it's sad. I think actually you should be paying more for the council people because you do a lot of work when you're at it. And it's sort of sad, everybody else got their piece of it, but you didn't. I think, you know, we get maybe better people and you have more time to get into this sort of thing and make you more valuable to the city.
Your time's up now, Dennis.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis.
You're welcome.
Anybody else for the public hearing on the subject of the budget? Okay, at this time at 7:51, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, comments, action?
Mr. Mayor, may I just get some clarification? The tractor purchase was also bundled with other things, isn't that correct?
Well, it was a tractor plus the 30-foot boom mower attachment. And purchasing through cooperative purchasing or piggybacking is expressly allowed by Washington state law. We do that all the time. And in fact, our vehicles that we'll be purchasing in 2018 after the 2018 budget is approved will all be purchased on the so-called state contract. So, you know, we use a variety of purchasing methods, whether it's piggybacking for a city at Tacoma to buy a garbage truck, or National Joint Purchasing Alliance, or the state DES bid contracts, or straight out bidding ourselves. We do all those things depending upon the circumstances. And for us, it's about what will get us the, the best product at the best price.
Does that answer your question?
I think so. What about this, wasn't, what about the issue of staffing that tractor? Was there? I can't remember.
Well, that's in the 2018 budget.
That's in the budget.
Well, yeah, so I guess that's what I'm talking about because we're talking about the budget, so.
Yeah, so, well, the, the 2018 budget includes one new FTE, and that position split between the stormwater function and the parks facilities function. The stormwater function is really dedicated to the mowing component. Largely, it'll be a combination of mowing, and we'll also have somebody increasing our street sweeper operations an additional day a week. But this particular tractor is designed to allow it to drive on the roads of the city, the roads of the state, as well as hit roadside ditches and drive through the Brickyard Creek corridor. So I know I got quizzed pretty hard about, "Why didn't we buy an excavator? Maybe a medium-sized excavator, it would be more functionally useful." I thought that sounded interesting. Of course, these decisions aren't made just tossing the coin, "Do we get the John Deere or the Ford New Holland?" You know, they're made through a detailed process. You know, first we identify what our need is, then we've got a fleet manager, Leo Jacobs, who helps spec these things. Any equipment that's going to be jointly used, such as this, we work on a committee that involves our public work staff, so the different departments that would share use at some point. Ultimately, it goes to Mark, who reviews all that and puts his stamp of approval influence in on it. For example, the Mini we purchased earlier this year, you know, there was a robust debate about which Mini, what size, and how would it be used. We brought equipment out to demo to, to, to look at that, and the departments ultimately persuaded Mark and me, who then recommended to you, and you agreed to purchase that particular piece of equipment. So I guess that it seems like you're, you know, you're coming under fire for maybe not engaging in more detail on a particular purchase. You know, you're approving, what, a 20, how do we add, $28 million budget tonight? And all the details on the various pages of the budget, you know, we're going to be purchasing a $400,000 stormwater or vector truck for a sewer department. Frankly, I don't expect any of you to go down and spec the equipment. I don't think that's your job. I believe that's something that will come out of the department, and it'll be brought to you for a recommendation. Anybody who wants to look at the spec details, compare other, other rigs, maybe look at demo rigs, you're welcome to do it. But once it comes to the council, that's really the point where you're approving the, the rig on the basis of the budget as opposed to, gee, have you considered buying a tracked stormwater evac truck because that might be cool? You know, that's the process that we've gone through on your behalf. Time to house to answer that.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Obviously, I feel a little bit of frustration, but you know, the city operates every day of the week, you know, it's a 24/7 city, 365 days a year. We buy a lot of equipment, we run a lot of staff, we have a lot of functions, and you know, there are various layers of authority and various lanes of authority, and the city council's job is really not to spec, you know, tractors.
So, second reading. It will be ordinance 1890-17.
I'd like to move to approve ordinance number 1890-17, an ordinance adopting the annual budget for the city of Cedar Woolley, Washington for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2018.
I'm sorry, just.
Second. Sorry, Jermaine.
That's okay.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. The motion is Judith Dunley, the second is by Councilmember Sandstrom, and discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask if Patsy could explain the property taxes and, you know, basically, the fact that we haven't, we haven't raised property taxes and, but yet, you know, there's so much going out, and I feel like a lot of times, people feel like we're raising taxes and, you know, basically, some layman terms for people to understand that it's not, it's, it's not as it looks.
Right. Since I believe 2009, the council has chosen to take a zero percent increase in property tax. The dollars coming into the city have gone up due to new construction because a new home is built or a new commercial building, and it is taxed at the same rate as the existing structures within the city. That being said, that's general property taxes. 20-some years ago, the citizens of our city approved a public safety building bond, which constructed the fire and police station portion of this complex. And as a result, property taxes were increased at the citizens, you know, the citizens voted to increase property taxes to pay for those bonds. The last payments on those bonds were made last year, so taxes payable to the city actually went down because those bonds were paid off. There's page 36, I have the council packet, shows a chart, or a graph, and then 37 shows the pie chart there of various revenues coming into the city. And, yeah, property taxes has stayed pretty level. Some other taxes, kind of, I'm taking a look here real quick to see. The only other increase would be some impact fees, which are considered taxes of sorts, but those are on new construction, not on existing construct, existing homes. Does that kind of answer your question?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say nay. The motion carries. I should have reread the ordinance, by the way, so I'll just do that for everybody's edification. The ordinance was number 1890-17, an ordinance adopting the annual budget for the city of Cedar Woolley, Washington for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2018. So moving on to unfinished business, so we added the lease, the museum lease to unfinished business. This is something we've been working back and forth and for, what, over maybe two months now? So Aaron, you want to introduce it? It looks like we finally have some agreement.
Sure. When, when last we left this particular topic, the city had proposed a lease that included a purchase option. Our lease transferred maintenance of the building in its entirety to the museum, and didn't charge rent, gave them a purchase option, and had a shorter term. The, the museum board has met a couple of times, they've tapped Brock Stiles to help them, he and I met a couple of times, and ultimately, it became clear that the museum board didn't really value the purchase option scenario. Felt like that was maybe, I don't know, I got the impression that it felt cumbersome or something like that, but they really wanted more time on the clock. So this compromised lease is a 15-year lease with a 10-year option period. The museum would pay no rent, but would instead operate a minimum of one day, that is defined as six hours per week, a museum and historical museum open to the public, and they would take on all of the maintenance responsibility, interior and exterior, and all utilities for the building, with the exception of the portion that the city has retained, which is the stairwell, the office that we rent to log a rodeo, and our city apartment. So our recommendation is to authorize the, to approve the lease and authorize the mayor to execute the lease. The museum is obviously a great resource for the community, is something we want to keep in town. This gives them enough time to be able to fundraise and do what they need to do. They still have some, you know, dreams and visions of expansion, but it also provides the city with some budget certainty that we won't have museum repair and callouts for the museum. That will be the responsibility of the tenant.
So what was our cost last year in maintenance and repair?
Well, I think we were about $17,000, plus or minus, that's just from my memory.
And is that, is that the way it is every year? Or was that in?
No, no, last year was a bigger year because the city chose to do the front facade. It's difficult to capture our staff time, there are, there are issues with the roof that have just been ongoing year after year, and, you know, those callouts are, are frustrating to try to figure out what's going on. So some years it might be just a few thousand dollars, some years it's more. It's kind of unpredictable, and it's clearly a building that's going to need more maintenance in the future. So putting 15 years on the clock as an initial term gives the museum the ability to, without owning it, sort of take ownership of it, fundraise and fund the projects that need to be funded over there. The city does plan to do the sidewalk. That's on our list? Yeah, that's still on the list for next year. So that'll be a really positive enhancement in that area, too. There's kind of a non-standard curb detail in that vicinity, so.
So we just received this tonight, so I haven't had a chance to read it thoroughly, so I'm assuming then that they will, for the 10 or 15 years or until they purchase it, they are going to be responsible for all repairs?
Yeah, so this is the same lease that you saw last time with a couple of changes, and I apologize, I should have probably highlighted them for you. The changes that you're going to see, just to walk you through it, would be the lease term. This lease term's a 15-year term. I think we proposed a five-year term with a five-year option, if I recall correctly.
That's right.
So this is a 15-year term with a 10-year option. You'll notice on page two, under 3.2, the option term is initially triggered by the tenant, the museum, and that's subject to the city's written consent to continue as well as the possibility of negotiating revised terms. The key change in this agreement is in paragraph four on page two, which is the base rent. The, this language is actually the same as what we had before. They had come back and proposed the modification of, the city would continue to maintain the exterior of the premises. So paragraph four ties into paragraph six on page three, which has the tenant at its sole expense and has additional rent maintaining and repairing the interior. Tenant keeping the foundation, roof and exteriors in good order and repair, and the tenant also would do any snow and ice removal from the parking areas and sidewalks around the museum. So the other changes, there were a couple typos that Brock identified, and then on page 43, we deleted the purchase option and substituted some language that said, "This lease does not contain an option, but both parties agree that should the tenant want to do that during the term of the lease, both parties shall participate in good faith in negotiation on the terms of tenants' purchase of properties." So really a provision that's kind of a placeholder to say, "Hey, if you guys want to buy it, the city is willing to talk to you about that." And then the last addition would be exhibit B, Brock's handmade drawing of the premises. So we are currently out of lease with the museum because we went back and forth several times and the lease expired. However, if the council would like to take this and read it and come back on December 6th or December 13th for possible action, you know, at this point, I don't really see any harm in doing that if you'd be more comfortable with that.
Aaron, I guess it's off-topic, but you brought up the sidewalk in front of the museum.
Yeah.
That whole stretch from state to ferry is pretty crummy, and actually crummy.
Okay, this is off-topic, so I'm not calling you out of order.
Were you talking about the sidewalk? And I'm interested in, in seeing if we can get other parties involved, especially the Legion, and to, to go in on that sidewalk repair.
Well, it's a great discussion to have, but it's not what we're discussing right now.
Would you, I got, I have a question that's, you know.
That's Jermaine.
Yeah. Did you say that the roof was just done? I thought, I know the facade was just done last year, but.
The city did the facade in 2017. The McIntyre Foundation funded the museum itself to do the roof project. It's been probably five years now, but it wasn't a complete reconstruction, so the roof is, it's a, it's a, it's a flat roof here in Washington State, it's just something that requires ongoing maintenance, so.
Part of the facade was done already and not, not the other part, is that right? Or none of it was?
Well, so the facade under our, our now expired lease was actually the portion of the exterior that was responsible, the museum, but it had the LP siding, and so the city just wanted to get in there and take care of that, so that was done. With the McIntyre funding, the front entry, there was a ramp installed to try to provide ADA access, and I don't know if that ramp will be, will that ramp be addressed at all as part of the sidewalk? Yeah, so that ramp's also kind of substandard, so really, anything in that section from state to ferry that's not fixed will be fixed as part of next year's sidewalk project.
Where are we going with this? This has nothing to do with the lease. Are there any more questions that would be pertinent to the lease, which is the topic at hand? Action?
Did other council members, did they want to look at it, or longer? I mean, it's old business. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the lease agreement with the Cedar Woolley Museum.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Councilmember Sandstrom, second by Councilmember Lemley to authorize the mayor to sign this lease with the museum. Is there further discussion?
I'd just like to say that Cedar Woolley Museum is the only year-round cultural attraction that Cedar Woolley has, and I think it's important that the city came to agreement. I like this, though. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recuse myself from this vote because I am a museum board member.
Okay, noted. Councilmember Kinzer is recused from the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say nay. It carries. Thank you. Also, under unfinished business is the. Also, under unfinished business is the available property tax refund levy. This is a second reading, page forty-two in your packets.
Before we kick this one off, I just want to say that I may possibly have maligned the Mount Vernon Hospital without cause at your last meeting by blaming them for this tax refund levy. I called the treasurer's office and they were not able to tell me that a particular property owner had caused this particular tax refund levy, so I don't have a great answer as to why is it so big this year. Our experience has been, in the past, when it's been this big, the only times we've seen that have been when the Mount Vernon Hospital caused it. So, with that being said, you asked for this to come back. You really have three different options. One is no action. The second would be a motion to approve and request the refund levy on page forty-three, and a second one would be on page forty-four, or I guess a combination of forty-three and forty-four. So you can take none, one, the other, or both of the refund levies. And these refund levies would then be levied in two thousand and eighteen and spread out on all of the property taxpayers of Cedar Woolley to make up for what was not collected in twenty seventeen? I was thinking it was sixteen, because they wouldn't, they wouldn't know what was collected. Yeah, I think it's, I think it's two thousand and sixteen, actually, which still makes me think the hospital, but. Anyway, it's back for you, for your action, if you so choose. And if you, if you want to.
I'm not altogether sure that there's a motion of any sort, but.
No, I did not put one in the packet. It would just be a motion to request the refund levy in the amount of, you know, nine thousand three hundred sixty-nine dollars and forty-two cents.
Not unsilent.
But it's a pleasant ringtone.
And I know who that is.
So, both amounts are on page forty-two in the second-to-last paragraph, and the action is whether you're going to refund it to ourselves, retain the money, or not, or is there some medium position that somebody has? And I think I asked Aaron to do the math last time, and he didn't appreciate it, but.
I was pretty close last time, if I recall, but. I would think if you'd like to do them both, I would just recommend two separate motions, since they are actually two levies, one being related to the public safety bond and one being the.
General property tax.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to refund nine thousand three hundred sixty-nine dollars and forty-two cents in the general property tax to be refunded, as well as the one thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars and ninety-one cents in the public safety building bond property tax to be refunded.
Okay, motion was made by Councilmember Johnson, seconded by Councilmember Carnegie, to request the full refund of levies, nine hundred and thirty, nine thousand three hundred sixty-nine point four-two in general property tax and one thousand nine hundred seventy-six point nine-one in the public safety building bond property tax. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. And the motion carries. Thank you, council. Moves us on to M, new business. Item one is a proposed amendment, number three, to the Sauk Mountain Development Agreement dated January twenty-ninth, two thousand and four, and setting of a public hearing for December thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen. This is a first reading. It's on page forty-five through fifty-four.
Yeah, so this is on, just for a first reading, it, if a public hearing wasn't required, it would be a consent item, from my perspective. This will be the third requested amendment to this developer agreement. If you were to drive up Portobello, it currently deadends before you get to the power lines, that particular project scope, that phase of the Sauk Mountain development, extends to the west side of the power line easement area. The Dukes Hill folks are obligated to build Portobello to the western edge of that first development, which is the western edge of the power lines. However, the city council agreed in two thousand and six, and again in two thousand and thirteen, to delay building that road because that road would go nowhere. We are in the same boat now. They're technically obligated to build it by December thirty-one of two thousand and seventeen, but for all the same reasons that applied in oh-six and two thousand and thirteen, they'd like to amend the agreement. I'm proposing this time to delete a time period and instead require that it be built by, when Dukes Hill, which owns, if you're, if you're just imagining Portobello, just imagine it going all the way to Highway Nine, the property on the north side is owned by Dukes Hill, the property on the south side, so above Beachley and Alderwood, is owned by Seventh Heaven. If either of those property owners develop, they would have to build this little extension as well as the rest of the road, or if the city asks them to build it with one year's notice, they'd have to build it. So, two triggers, development, or the city says, hey, just go do it, would make it happen, but there's really no reason to build it today. It's very much like the rumor example I gave you earlier of requiring a road to go to the edge today when there's no demand for traffic beyond where it's currently built. So this is on your council agenda for December thirteenth for a public hearing because state law requires a public hearing before a developer agreement is approved, and this is an amendment to a developer agreement. So, it's on tonight, just for your information, and a heads up that it's coming on the thirteenth.
Okay, thank you, Aaron. Are there any questions about that? Okay, item two, AFSMI twenty eighteen, twenty twenty agreement, page fifty-five through eighty-five in your packet. So we have an agreement, it looks like.
Yay.
Yeah, so, this will actually answer Harold's question. Harold?
I knew it was coming.
The question was, I see you're giving the administrators big raises, well, what about the regular workers? We sort of see ourselves all in the category of workers, but the answer is, there are really three different categories. We've got our AFSMI represented employees, who are paid subject to their collective bargaining agreement. That's the, this item. The next item would be the non-represented employees, and then we've got our Public Safety Guild employees that are represented by two separate contracts, and their pay is based upon what is in their negotiated collective bargaining agreements. For the AFSMI and the non-represented employees, the city, based upon an MOU with AFSMI from earlier this year, engaged a consultant to perform a salary compensation study. That study was presented at the city council work session back in, I don't remember, September, I think September, and that's also on our website, so anybody who's interested to see it can see it. What, what the collective bargaining agreement that's proposed for your ratification tonight does is it takes the studied positions and it targets, at the end of three years, that all of the employees in the AFSMI agreement would be paid at least ninety-five percent of the market. So, market's a hundred percent. We said we want, our target is to get to ninety-five percent of market in two thousand and twenty. So this agreement has a breakdown. In two thousand and eighteen, employees would get forty percent of the difference between their two thousand and seventeen pay and ninety-five percent of market, plus a two percent COLA. In two thousand and nineteen, they would get thirty percent of the difference between their two thousand and seventeen pay and market, plus a two percent COLA, and the same thing would happen in the third year of the agreement, bringing them to ninety-five percent of market with cost of living adjustments each year fixed at two percent. That is really the big shift in the agreement. It's a three-year agreement instead of a four-year agreement, which is more typical. There are a number of small changes that you can see in the track changes format, and separately from that, the tentative agreement includes an MOU that addresses the status of our engineering technician, project inspector position. This is a position that we've discussed before. The union feels very strongly that they should represent it, and the city has not shared that view. This MOU would say that after the current employee is no longer employed by the city and we replace the engineering project inspector with an employee, that that employee would become a bargaining unit member. And that's, that's, that's really, that's really it for the collective bargaining agreement. It's consistent with much of our discussions that occurred in closed session. Happy to answer any questions? Oh, I guess I didn't tell you, the, the AFSMI local did ratify this agreement last week, so it's, it's all set for your action.
Nice.
Tonight.
Well, and I, I would like to get action tonight, for one thing. I believe that we're going to ratify this anyway, but the second thing is, just for bookkeeping, it really helps out our staff who has to update all the information before, when is it, Patsy, December?
Right, for the January payroll.
So, it would be quite helpful to them, but, switching to a different topic, I'm really glad we did this. We, we went out and we did a salary survey. We knew our employees were not paid at as high as some other municipalities. I was a little shocked about how much the difference was, but I think it helped everybody to have a common yardstick that we all agreed upon, and we're not going for a hundred percent, five percent's for the love of Cedar Woolley. Sorry, we're, we're not going to go there, but we are taking big steps in getting people up to where they deserve to be paid based on the market, and I, and I'm glad that we did that, although it is painful on the budget and makes things more difficult. So, I would ask the council to ratify this tonight, and there's two motions, well, unless you can combine them, on page fifty-five recommending to approve this agreement, and also the portion that has to do with the engineering technician that Aaron talked about. Is there any other questions or?
Let's just work on the first one and say, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that you ratified the attached collective bargaining agreement with Local one seven six dash SW with AFSMI for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and twenty.
Second.
A motion was made by Councilmember Lemley, seconded by Councilmember Carnegie, to ratify the attached collective bargaining agreement with Local one seventy-six, Cedar Woolley AFSMI for two thousand and eighteen through two thousand and twenty. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. The second recommended motion is just below it.
I make a motion to approve the attached MOU with AFSMI regarding the engineering technician, project inspector position.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Carnegie and seconded by Councilmember Johnson, to approve the attached MOU with AFSMI regarding the engineering technician slash project inspector position. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to item M three, the two thousand and eighteen salary ordinance, similar but different, page eighty-six to eighty-eight of your packet.
So this, this item is also part of the balanced budget that you approved earlier tonight, and what's in the proposed ordinance uses the same formula as I just discussed for the AFSMI employees, with some exceptions, and those exceptions are, in particular, you can see some employee groups that we've banded together. For example, the finance director, fire chief, and police chief, those are not straight out of the salary survey. We averaged those positions out of the salary survey to create, I guess I would consider it, a department head classification. The same thing is true in the city engineer and IT director, and also for the two assistant fire chiefs. Our librarian and assistant librarian have a two-point-nine-nine percent cost of living adjustments in this ordinance. The prosecuting attorney is in addition, based upon the budget, and then you'll see there, there's no change in the hourly wages, with the exception of the firefighters, which are increased by one dollar. So, I just want to highlight the differences. The philosophy was the same for the vast majority, but it was adjusted to fit the specific needs this year in certain areas. The largest increase, though, would be based upon a forty percent differential, plus two percent COLA, of ninety-five percent in two thousand and seventeen, same as with the AFSMI employees.
Are there any questions? And I would also ask for a motion tonight for the same reason. The ordinance number is eighteen ninety-one dash seventeen, and the recommended motion is at the top of the page, on page eighty-seven.
I would like to produce, suggest, ordinance establishing the salary and wages for elected officials and employees of the city of Cedar Woolley, Washington, for the fiscal year beginning January one, two thousand and eighteen. Ordinance number eighteen ninety-one dash seventeen.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Councilmember Dunley, seconded by Councilmember Lemley. I know you're short, Rick, so I'm giving you a bunch of them. That's respect. Ordinance number eighteen ninety-one dash seventeen, and ordinance establishing the salaries and wages for elected officials and employees of the city of Cedar Woolley, Washington, for the fiscal year beginning January first, two thousand and eighteen. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. And the motion carries. So, information-only items, good of the order, anybody? I'm going to pop in here. So, I wish some people had stuck around because I wanted to talk to them, but I think it's pretty disingenuous to come before this body and say, looks like you don't have enough money to make a library as big as you promised, when some of those same people called down to Olympia, and here's just honesty, I know who you were, raise your hands if you were one of them, and said, don't give us two million dollars for this library, we don't want it, because you affected the outcome, and to come here and then say, ooh, looks like you didn't get the money, couldn't come through, I think that's very disingenuous. It hurt us. Anybody else? Motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
It's been moved by Councilmember Lemley and seconded by Councilmember Carnegie, that we adjourn. We now stand adjourned.